Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the special call meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education to order. It's June 12th at 8:30 a.m. Welcome. The members have an agenda before them. Is there a motion to adopt?
I have a motion.
A motion by Mrs. Hoyt, a second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? Unanimous? If you can join me for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing portion of the day. And first up is Mr. Larry Hamel with the fiscal year 2026 draft budget presentation.
We're out of practice. We've got to get going again. I bet this will be even more exciting the third time than it was the first two. Okay. The, go ahead, Larry. Next slide, the proposed budget for FY '26. As we get into that, I just want to kind of highlight, as we look back at this year, how effectively our tax dollars have been spent to this point with some of the accolades that are out there. I'm not going to read all these slides to you, but we've got some national accolades, as you'll see with this first slide, in terms of the best public schools, according to NIECH Incorporated, number four in the nation. When you look at some of our local metrics, you've got the Georgia Milestones, and there you can see, we've had the highest average milestone scores this past year, 23, 24, and we're waiting for the 25, 26 numbers to come in. But pretty excited about how well we did there. There's still room for improvement, as there always is, but against our competition, the other large school systems, we're doing very, very well. When it comes to advanced placement, all seven of our high schools earned distinction this year from college board for their advanced placement programs, and from the Georgia Department of Education. We have the highest SAT and ACT scores. You've got the highest SAT mean total score in the state, the highest ACT composite average score in the metro Atlanta, and three of our high schools rank in the top 10 in Georgia overall for the highest SAT scores. And then the graduation rate, again, their most current graduation rate has not been calculated, but going into this year, we had one of the highest in the state, and the highest among all the large Georgia districts, with a 96.18% rate, which is phenomenal. When you look at the investments we make in our career tech and fine arts programs, the return on investment for those is tremendous. If you're a student who's completed a pathway all the way through, you're graduating at 100%, and the same, if you go to the next slide, same is true for those fine arts pathway completers. So message there is get plugged in. We're going to provide the opportunities for you as a student, family. Get your students plugged in in fine arts and career tech, and you're going to get across that stage on time. Also athletically, again, I won't read all these to everybody, but it was literally a banner year for our athletic programs in Forsyth County schools. That was not always the case, was it, Mr. Shirley? Our former district athletic director back there knows it's come a long way over the last 10, 15 years. And then again, when you look at return on investment for families, and this number has probably ticked up by this point, this was as of early May, but as of early May, we had $29.5 million in scholarships awarded to our students. That does not include hope. When you look to the right there, when you add hope to that, those students that are hope eligible takes that grand total over $61 million in scholarships for our graduating seniors. So their parents are able to cash in on the great education they get here when their students go on to the next level. All that happens because we've got great people, great teachers and administrators, and obviously, that makes a big chunk of our budget every year is our people. And keeping great people, attracting great people and keeping great people isn't something that just happens. That comes as a result of intentional efforts. And Forbes Magazine actually ranked us of large employers throughout the nation, throughout the nation, when you think about the biggest employers in the country, 89th in the country and number five in Georgia, which is something we're very, very proud of. And our retention rate, which is something that I think most companies in any industry would love to have, is in excess of 95%. So I give a lot of credit to our principals for that, a lot of credit to the cultures that they've created at their schools, and certainly the culture at our district level as well. So having said all that, let's get to the FY '26 budget. As we've done the last couple of years, we want to make sure that our budget aligns to our strategic plan. When we started, we started out with these five budget building objectives that you see on the left-hand side there. Those are all very much in alignment with our strategic plan areas. And as we go through this, in the upper left-hand corner of each slide, you'll see the strategic plan area that those monies are focused on. Overall, just a quick overview of this budget, what we're proposing is a $750.5 million total budget. This is a 5% increase, 4.99% Larry, correct, increase over FY '25. No millage rate increases are proposed this year. We provide a balanced budget. And when we look at that 5% increase, I'm going to go into the details of that, but only a very small sliver of that is under our control that we've increased it. And so Larry, take us to the next slide, and we'll get into that. So in the realm of operational excellence, and you can see on the right, as we hold our millage rate, or at least that's what we've proposed, we'll have to wait and see when the actual digest comes in, but that certainly is our goal, is to hold that millage rate as low as we possibly can each and every year. You can see the historic millage rates there on the right, really making us the lowest M&amp;O millage rate of anybody in the metro area and of the large school systems. And this year's budget, again, we do not propose to raise that millage rate. We have what was House Bill 717 that passed, and that our voters voted in with a referendum back in November, and that puts a 4% cap on all reassessed home properties. So as our home properties get reassessed every year, they may be reassessed at 4, 5, 6, 7, and years past, we saw as high as 20%, 21% in my case. But the amount of money that we can collect off of that is now capped at 4%. So the good news for families out there, we keep doing our job as a school system, their home values are going to continue to go up, but how much of that comes back to us is capped for reassessment at 4%. We also continue to have our senior tax exemption for residents 65 and over. And in terms of our stewardship, our past boards and our current board have really wisely forecast the future and have set funds aside so that, like for the Mashburn Elementary School expansion, as an example, we're able to complete that debt-free, as we proposed last year when we did this. Of what we have to control, the locally controlled expenditures that we have power over, we're only increasing this year's budget by 1.54%, which is well below even the Consumer Price Index, you know, for inflation. We were doing, we were able to do this by some restructuring at district office. We did some realignment. We were able to collapse some positions and roles that were obsolete or duplicative, or simply weren't aligned to our goals for the system. We're able to do that. We're able to maintain a 15% fund balance for financial stability in the future. So we're really proud of the fact that we were able to present, our departments were able to come to me with a budget that really provides what our families need and our students need and our teachers need, but being able to kind of cut the fat wherever we could find it. Again, the forecasting continues to be part of our stewardship here. We're able to complete that management expansion without incurring new debt. We're able to continue to pay down existing debt that predated all of us here. And then we've also got some other state mandated costs coming at us that we knew several years ago would be coming at us at some point. That day has arrived, and I'll talk about that when we get into the state costs. In the realm of social and emotional health, this budget proposes some investments in student safety. We've increased the number of school psychologists, social workers, and student advocacy specialists to reduce student to professional ratios. I do want to give a shout out to our local legislative delegation. This was a priority that we set before them as they went into their session this year, and they were able to find some monies to come back to help us with that and to lower those ratios, and we're very appreciative of that. That's a great collaboration that we have with our local delegation. The next bullet point talks about our collaboration with the sheriff's office. And Sheriff Freeman has been a fantastic partner with us. And together, just as we do with our SRO programs, we were able to develop in partnership with them this year, a pair of threat assessment investigators that we can deploy to our schools to both help our SROs and our administrators determine threat levels and the proper responses to all those. And then we also, in this budget, have some money that we would like to reserve aside for panic alert systems as we continue to upgrade all of our safety measures. And certainly, there's a House bill out there that was passed this year, 268, that's going to require these starting July of 2026. And we've got some work to do to find the right fit for our schools. And I know that our safety department is working closely with our technology department to find the right package of safety alert systems for our schools, but in this budget, we do have some money set aside to accomplish that in a year's time. The learner experience, which is our core work, academic achievement accountability, we have been able to add a continuous improvement coordinator in this budget, an assistant director of student services, we proposed that as well, as well as investments in technology, professional learning, and locally developed instructional materials, as opposed to being handcuffed, if you will, to product-based materials that are out there, some of which have not even caught up to the science of reading at this point. By doing this in-house, we can control the content and make sure that we're need to be at the research level, and we're excited about the opportunity to do that. All the positions that we've added this year, the two in particular here, you see the improvement coordinator and the director of student services, these were all net budget neutral additions because of the other positions that we collapsed. And that's something that we've not, I don't believe, to my knowledge, have ever done in the past, but we're able to accomplish that this year. In terms of our recruitment and development, we're proposing a salary step for all eligible staff. We're also proposing that a step be added to the end of the salary schedule for eligible staff. We've got teachers, obviously, in the teacher retirement system, you've got to go 30 years to reach for retirement. Prior to last year, our salary schedule ended at year 25. Our hope in the future is to get that all the way to year 30 so that our schedule matches up with that. We were fortunate last year, financial picture allowed us to do that. This year, I believe the financial picture will allow us to do it again. It's not something we can promise years in advance, but it's certainly something that we want to try to make a priority, and I do believe with this year's situation, we can get that additional step added. Want to continue to invest in our Forsyth Teacher Academy. That has been a phenomenal pipeline for us of developing teachers to stay right here, right here in our county. We've got partnerships, University of North Georgia, with a teacher residency program, again, aimed at developing our teacher pipeline. And not only that, but we want to continue to invest in not just our teacher programs, but our leader development programs as well. So as we hit this wave of potential retirements over the next five years, that we've got folks trained and ready to go to step into those leadership roles. Climate, culture, and community, this is where we try to take this growing system. I mean, we're the fifth largest system in the state right now, and we want to continue to make this system feel the way it's always felt. That's part of what makes this a special system, and you do that with having the right people. And sometimes that means that we've got a community expectation that exceeds a state-funded expectation. And so when it comes to all these different folks that you see listed here, we're not just looking for, you know, for people who can do the job, but people who can do the job very, very well and understand the value of relationship building and making, you know, their large departments feel small. A couple of these positions that we've been able to add through the years that are not existent in every school system in the state or in the country, but certainly become expected of us in this, would be our school resource officers, of which we have at least one in every school. We have at least one nurse in every school. And it's amazing to me, as we go to state conferences and we talk to our peers and colleagues in other systems, they would love to have this. They would love to have these proactive, you know, measures, if you will, in their schools that we've taken. And of course, our student advocacy specialist is something that we're grateful we got a little bit of funding for that this year, grateful for that, but they have, those folks have been worth their weight in gold, obviously, in terms of helping students in crisis. Those are the sorts of things that we just talked about that lead to our 1.54% increase. The other 3.46% increase is really things that we'd have no control over, and they all come down to the increase that we've seen in state healthcare premiums and increases in the teacher retirement system. This year alone, we have an additional $22.3 million increase, the bulk of that coming in the rising cost of employee healthcare premiums, $16.3 million alone this year. If you look at this historically, you can see the rise in those benefit costs, you know, over the last 10 years is pretty significant. I think, Larry, if I'm not mistaken, $207 million of this year's proposed budget, correct, is what that number? $207 million?
Almost 27% of our budget this year will be TRS and healthcare.
Will be these costs, yeah. This is one that we put in there because not a lot of people understand this, but as part of the QBE formula, the Fund School Systems, there's a thing called the Local Fair Share, where every school system, in essence, has to forego five mils' worth of your monies that you've collected to go to the state. That money then is redistributed to systems they deem to be needy through their equalization program. We do not get any of that back. So when you look at our tax dollars, $100 million plus this year will be money withheld from us that will be used throughout the rest of the state. It's not a, I'm not making any sort of political statement here, but I think it's something that people need to be certainly aware of. And when you look at that historically, over the last 10, 11 years here, you can see, again, that as the value of our community has gone up and our homes have gone up, that fair share value has gone up tremendously. And as we said, this year will be over $100 million. 73% of our budget goes towards instruction, and we put this slide together just because there's this idea, I still like the slide originally that showed you this filling up, but for the sake of time, we're just going to go with this as is. But a lot of folks, you know, as we talk about where does our money go, when you look at this, this is a clear indication, you know, 73% goes to instruction, and folks would say, well, that's still, there's still a lot of overhead. But a lot of that overhead, when you look at this, transportation, maintenance, school facilities, yeah, we've got a lot of assets that we have to manage and we have to take care of every year in terms of those facilities and buses and all the things that are required to get our kids to school and to provide safe, you know, safe learning environments. So that captures in a synopsis, the fun portion and the engaging and enlightening portion of this budget proposal. I'll leave it to Larry to get to the state required elements of the budget proposal.
Good morning. So this morning, we're going to talk about the 2026 budget overall, and we would like to just start by pointing out the makeup of the revenue. As the years have gone along, typically, most school systems got a majority of their revenue from the state, but as the state has become more complicated in terms of QBE and growing communities, typical community like ours, you'll see the state becomes a smaller, smaller portion of that as there's additional resources that we decide to put into our budget that's not covered by the state. So this particular year, we're about 53.3% local, about 46.7% state and federal. Now, when you look at the number breakdown for that, going from left to right, you'll see 26 budget versus 25, the increase and decrease in percentage. You can see that for local, it's about $400 million, and for the state and federal, it's about $350.5 million, for a total of almost $750.5 million versus $715 million last year. So the total increase is about 35.7% or 5%. Now, if we break it down even further and we look at the breakdown between local and state, we can see that in our local revenue, the majority of that $400 million going from left to right, 26 budget to 25 for both years, is avalanche taxes. And for both years, we had a 15.28% in the 25 budget as approved and proposed budget for '26. Then you'll see other taxes as TVAT and tangible real estate. We have interest income, tuition, other local revenue, and surplus sales makes up the remaining amount. So the increase in local revenues in total is about $22.3 million or about 5.9. If you look at the state level, you can see our QB formula from '25 to '26 went from about $331 million to about $343.5 million, or about $12.5 million increase. Other state resources increased slightly. Federal indirect costs, there's a dramatic increase from previous years because of the way the funds are being distributed by the federal government, and then also the federal control funds have increased as well over the years for about a $13.5 million increase or 3.99. Overall, again, we're looking at 35.7 or about 5% increase across the board. Now, when we break down the tax revenue QB further, because those are the two largest components of your budget, you'll see that right now, we're projecting a net digest of almost $23.8 billion with a millage rate of 15.28% that should produce about $361 million, almost $362 million in gross revenue. The commission collection rate for that is 2.5% as set by law, so it's just starting to go from $9 million, which would bring the total collection after commission to about $353 million. At a 99.84% collection rate, we're looking at $352.3 million versus last year of about $328 for an increase of about 7.16. The QB formula is about $341.4 million as signed by the governor into law last month. The midterm estimate is about $2 million growth for a total of about $343.5 or about 12.4% increase over last year. Now, when we start talking about the budget itself, expenditure-wise, one thing we always have to keep in mind is we are people, person, company. Most of what we do is provide teachers and staff to teach the students in the school system. With that being emphasis of what we do, our budget is about 90.4% salary benefits. That number has increased dramatically over the last several years because of two main factors, TRS and healthcare and cost. Operations is only about 9.6. Now, if we get a further breakdown and see what that is, again, this is kind of back to the person slide we had earlier, but more in the pie chart configuration. You can see instruction makes up 73%, and you can see the different categories going down there on your left. Now, when we get into the actual breakdown of the expenditure, we always break the expenditure detail down by function level. That's how the state requires us to do it. So you go from left to right, you'll see the '26 budget versus the '25 budget. You'll see all the different categories, and of course, instruction being the largest of those items, closely followed by school admin, maintenance of operation, and transportation. With that being said, the budget for this year proposed, based on this diagram, or excuse me, this projection here, is $750.5 million versus a budget of about $715 last year, or a $36 million increase, 4.99. The way this budget is set up, based on revenue versus expenditures, expenditures, excuse me, we're predicting about $16,000 in extra revenue. Now, if we break it down even further, between salary benefits and operation, you can see that of the $750.5 million, $750.5 million, 678.4 of that is salaries and benefits, and only $72 million of its actual operation. If you compare that to previous years, again, you'll see the breakdown compared to the previous year going from left to right. If you look at the lower-left inside side, you'll see that there's a breakdown between '25 and '26. There's a slight increase in percentage of salary benefits from the previous year of 90.35 to 9.4, and again, a decrease in operation to 9.6. If you look on the little right, you'll see the breakdown of that 4.99% increase of the $35.7 million. As you can see, state health increased by about 16.3, TRS about 6. The portion of the allotments that we had to put in place this year covered by the state is 2.3, versus the cover by us is 2.7, and the actual budget increase that we had control over was about 8.3 for a total of $11 million. In total, you can see that the local portion controlled by us is about 1.54 versus 3.46 on the state mandated. Now, if we look at fund balance, we started the year off with about $172 million. Currently, we're expecting to expend more money than we collect this year of about 2.6, giving us a fund balance into this year of about $169.5 million. That would be, if you take into consideration the current budget for '26, we would have about $15 million, $15,000, $16,000 add to that. Back in '23, we reserved out $33 million actually in debt service. We're down to $31.1. Last year, we approved a reserve for the beginning of the Mashburn Elementary School expansion of about 8.3. This year, we're proposing 10.9. A lot of that's due to inflation just over the last year and a half. And also, we're proposing $4.5 million for safety and security, based on the recent House bill that passed, this past legislation. That would give us any fund balance of about $114.5 million or about 15.26% of current year expenditures. Now, some other things we have to cover real quick, based on law, and so you'll understand what's going on with the rest of the budget out there, is debt service. We're predicting about $33.3 million in debt service collections. This year, we have $41.9 million planned to spend out on debt service. That's for all the bonds. That would have excess expenditures above revenue of about 8.5. We're bringing in the last portion of the SPOSS six funds that we agreed to spend against debt service of 14.5. That's a change in fund balance of about $6 million, and we should end the year about $6.8 million. When you look at food nutrition, last year, we're predicting a $2.6 million, $2.7 million deficit. Right now, that number's going to be less than that, maybe half of it. In the current year budget, we're predicting a deficit of about 5.5, a lot of that has to do with the increase in healthcare and TRS, which the state, the federal government doesn't really pay for that, and they have to be made up with local funds. So right now, we're predicting to begin the year with about $22 million. Right now, the estimated change in expenditures over revenue is about 1.2. We'll end the year about 21. If you take out the expenditures for the next year's budget, that means we should be about 15.7 next year for fund balance and school nutrition. Now, one other thing we have to talk about is the other federal programs and capital projects. We are year three and a half going into SPOSS six. I can't believe it already, like it seems like just yesterday we approved that. We're predicting about $62 million in local revenue. We will transfer out 14.5 for SPOSS debt service. We will bring in about $16 million for Mashburn Expansion from the Drone Fund, and we're expecting to spend about $62 million this year in facilities cost, which means we'll increase fund balance about 1.9 should end the year up with $67 million. That $67 million will have to carry us the last year and a half with all this stuff going on with the next two clusters that Matt has planned. Now, if you look at special revenue, you'll see that the bottom, excess revenue over expenditures, the 5.5, that is the school nutrition. All the other federal programs listed in these category under this column, by law, have to be, the revenue has to equal expenditures. So when you look at local sources, most of that money, love knowing, is school nutrition. But then when you look at federal sources, most of that includes all the other federal programs like Title I, Title II, SPED, et cetera, as well as school nutrition. As you can see, the predicted revenue is 37.5 versus about $43 million in expenditures. Again, that excess expenditure over revenue is tied to school nutrition, and we expect to have a $21 million fund balance, which again, is school nutrition's fund balance, and end the year at 15.7, again, school nutrition fund balance. The budget timeline, one thing I do want to bring up is the, and this is where it gets a little complicated, we are having our last public budget meeting today. Next Thursday, we plan to approve the budget. In the meantime, we are still working with the county with the complications from House Bill 581 and House Bill 92 for them to get final numbers.
717.
Yes, I'm sorry, 717 as well, thank you. And they're telling us probably beginning of next week, they'll have final tax digest numbers that we can get, at which time we should be allowed to go ahead and start putting the ads together, because we need information from them before we can put the ads out, to get those ads out for the millage meetings sometime at the end of June, beginning of July.
I would just, so on your own calendars, as I look at this, so we've got millage hearings called for the 19th at 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. You can cross those off your calendars. We're going to update this and put out there as well. We can't, so the budget approval, we're hoping to present that to you the 19th for final approval at 6:30 p.m., all right? The earliest we could possibly have, and the reason this gets complicated is you have to have millage hearings posted in the newspaper with specific digest data information. That's the number that Larry's waiting on to get. We can't post the ad without those numbers. And our particular local- In our particular local newspaper that only publishes a couple of days a week, you have to give them advance notice in order to get an ad in. And then that ad, as we learned the hard way last year, if that ad is not in a full seven days in advance of the meeting, then, then there's issues there, correct?
Yeah. To that point, what happened was the newspaper only publishes twice a week. They publish a Tuesday, Wednesday and a Friday, Saturday. One year, we published on a Tuesday, Wednesday, thinking, oh, it's Tuesday, we meet the seven-day criteria for the next week. The state government came to us, Georgia, and said, no, it's a Tuesday, Wednesday, so we're going to use the Wednesday as the last date of that paper publishing and say, no, you missed it by one day. So we learned our lesson last year.
But, but the challenge with that, the long story short, the challenge with that is the reason we're having to push back those millage rates is, is let's just say Larry gets that, that final digest number he needs for the ads. I, I mean, even, even if he got them tomorrow, by the time they could get posted in the newspaper, it wouldn't be until next week. And then that pushes us back off. So the earliest possible that we could start the budget, excuse me, the millage hearings would be on the 26th of June. And, and we've got at least one scheduled on that day at 5:30. I'm predicting probably that that won't be the case. We'll probably have to push the millage hearings into, into July. Now, the reason we feel confident to go ahead and, and present a budget to you for approval is we've seen enough of the digest numbers that even though we don't have exactly what we need to post for the millage hearing, we, we know the numbers are there positive to, to meet up with the budget requirements that we have this year. So, but that, that, just to give you kind of the, the whole story of why this may get delayed, my, my feeling is, and we, and we can, I'll individually reach out to you to talk about dates that are possible, but we're, we're probably looking at not completing the millage portion of all this until, until mid-July at the earliest.
Members, any questions, discussion?
Mr. Hamel, I just have a really, I guess, a question for you is, I wanted to see if it would be possible for you to reach out to our surrounding counties and just, we've talked about this millage hearing and we're having to push the dates. I would just be curious to see when our surrounding counties actually are getting and compare if they're all in the same boat we are and are behind on getting their millage information.
I'd be more happy to reach out and find out.
They, it seems like I read in the news Cherokee County's had it for a while.
They've had their budget and that, that's certainly something that could be done earlier. There's, there's no doubt about that. But, but the millage, you are at the mercy of your, of your tax assessor.
Well, I agree with that. And when they get their tax digest, you know, and there was a comment in their newspaper that they already knew what their digest was in Cherokee. So I would just be curious to see for the future, you know, compare where we are to where our surrounding counties are.
Three years ago, I think we had...
Answer your question, yes, Larry, and I will look in.
Yes.
Go ahead, Larry.
Three years ago, before a lot of this activity happened over the last two years, if I'm mistaken, we had our budget done by early April and our millage numbers by early May and the budget approved like June 6.
Yes.
That just tells you how fast it can go. Unfortunately, you know, a lot with the House bills that have come down the road, that's made it real complicated for a lot of the, it's more of the, in this case, for us, it's not only do we use munis, but the county uses munis and munis is used by 47,000, 4,700 different municipalities. And they're having to make all these changes statewide and nationwide for all these different people to fix these things. And sometimes it just takes them a while to get it done.
But from our standpoint, you, you guys have lived through now a year with a, with a rookie superintendent. We've made it, we've made it through this year and going into next year, the way we do this budget process is going to be done a little bit differently. And it's going to start a little bit in terms of bringing things to you a little bit sooner than we have so that we can at least have our portion of the budget done. And then we'll just have to await the millage rates to, you know, to, to make our decisions from there.
Thank you, Mr. Hamel. I think we're good.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to the public participation portion of the agenda. Mrs. Mayo, do we have anybody signed up? No? All right. If there's nothing else, then I'll seek a motion to adjourn. A motion by Mr. Asherwood, a second by Mrs. Hoyes, all in favor, unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
We're about to start a new meeting?